Quiet. Smile everyone. Don't have a rizzle on the cricket this year. All right, six o'clock, get things rolling. To start with, we need to review and prove the minutes from July tenth. I need a motion.
I need a motion, we approve the minutes as written.
Okay. Is there any corrections or discussions on the minutes, any changes? Okay, all in favor? Okay. All right. Adjustments to the agenda. We would, we're gonna just bring up the, appoint the new select board member up top. Cause everybody knows we've lost two people in the last two months, so we've, we're gonna fill this last position, so I would like to make the motion to appoint Bobby back as select board member until March of 2025. A second. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good to go Bobby. You've signed your license. Let's get me up here, let us. Help us with the naps. So, we need to, the next point of business is to select the new select board chair. Sign, I nominate Larry Douglas. Any discussion, any issues with that?
Bobby.
Only two seconds left. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Perfect. All right, set and approve the tax rate.
I'll let you do that sheet. So there's been some changes, uh, the education rates, they were revised a few times, we got the final ones this afternoon. Everything else is in there the same as the last sheet I gave you. So we adjusted the final grand list from Dorothy. That figure and then the education rates. The, the front stuff is, is all the revenues, the town anticipates, that's in the town report, you can compare. How much we'll end up collecting between, everything is the bottom of the first page. And then the grand list divided by how much money we need to raise gives us the town rate, two, two town rates at the top of the second page. And then the square, the first square, the 2024 tax rate summary. That shows you the homestead rate, 1.6530, non-residential rate, 1.7965. Everything else is the same, the town rates broken down, the local agreement is the veterans exemption. That did change a little, this year went up just a tick. And then that gives you the, the final rates at the bottom in the yellow. 2.3817 and 2.5252. So when I did some comparison, that is, oh, sorry. So it comes down to a homestead increase of .1913 and a non-homestead increase of .3228. So I ran it on some, some tax bills and well, you can see it on, and just in that, so the homestead rate is increased by eight percent. And the non-homestead rate is 14%. So that roughly figures out to $191 per 100,000 assessed value increase for a homestead. So if your house, if your house and land is worth $100,000, your tax bill is going up $191. If you're a non-homestead, non-residential person and your house was worth $100,000, it is going up $323. If your house is worth 200, you double it, it's worth.
Yeah.
That's.
Yeah.
So eight percent and 14%. So, um, your, your sheet there, I mean, I was thinking we might have to wait to really approve it, but unless, unless you wanna change anything on the revenues, you know, this is what we figure at the beginning of the year, almost the end of last year, you know, the estimated revenues are, are a guess, you know, how much, how much are we gonna bring in, in town clerk recording fees or, or all the different little revenues, but they don't add up to a lot, you can see the use of the fund balance, select board last year decided to use 35,000 for the general fund and 30,000 for the highway fund. So those two figures are on the first page. Under, one under general fund and one under the highway. So general fund has the rest of those little, those little revenues that the town gets. You can see that adds up to 79,960. Highway has, the highway state aid from Vermont, which is all screwy between the two floods from last year, and now they're doing the same thing this year. So last year, select board had decided to use 30,000 on top of the 32 they would get this year. But now we're getting all the payments again this year. So it's gonna be a little messy for a couple of years on that, till that equals back out. The top part, I guess that's the biggest chunk, if you see the top of the first page, 145,000. That's the pilot money from the state that we get paid for the, the land that the state owns and the buildings that the state owns, and then the current use money that we get, those from the state. Those are low estimates, they will come in a little higher. In the past, the town has always, you know, feathered a little low to give a little room. So that's where all those figures come from. The middle is what the two budgets were, the 746 and the 499. You take that and you subtract what we're gonna take in revenues, it brings you down to the, to the bottom, little chart on the first page. It's the two education rates, so much money. And then, uh, the town will bring in those last three figures to cover the town budget, the highway budget, and then the little one is the veterans exemption, the 4900. So that's how much we'll collect in taxes, 2,285,000. That with our revenues, we'll pay the school and we'll pay the town budget.
Good. A bunch of numbers.
Yep.
I guess we need a motion to accept. Right, is there any question?
Yeah, if you have questions or wanna talk or explain it more.
I, I, I don't, I'm good.
So basically the town rate and the highway rate is the grand list divided by how much money we need for the budget. So that's the top of the second page. Grand list in the box. Town needs 521, you divide that, that gets you the .3943. Same thing for the highway. Those two rates into that next square with the veterans and throw in the school rate, that they just, you know, nothing we can do about that, they, that's the rate they give us. Adds up to the town's rate that will be on the tax bill, 2.3817 and 2.5252.
Okay, any, any questions? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
So one of them, take one sheet and everyone sign that bottom part there.
And also, it's always asked about the late homestead filing penalty. We've always applied the fee when somebody files their homestead late. That's the way it's always been, we've done it. It's when you file your income taxes, it's when you file your homestead, so the, um,
3% and I, so it's all done through the state, you know, state does the homestead, so they, they're the ones who send us the download of who's filed their homestead and we get one every month from last month right through till October 31st.
All right.
I'm seasoned, I know to bring out your pen.
All right, so we'll move on.
Yep.
Departments. Highway out of the box here. I'm sorry folks, but we're gonna have to go into executive session, so I make a motion to go into executive section, session to address a personnel issue with one of our employees.
Second.
All approved?
Aye.
Okay. We, I would like to make a motion that we accept the time sheet is submitted.
Second.
Second, all in favor or any discussion? Okay, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Done.
Okay, great.
All right, Harold, you're up.
No, just a few things.
Few things for us.
Oh, yeah, we're, the name of the work, Elmer Rose. Getting closer and closer, courses, still a lot of work. I've had some bridges inspected, town road bridge is closed. It's washed out some of the blocks and the deck is junk. So eventually we'll have to decide what to do with that. The rest of the bridges in town are fine. Other than being washed out or whatever, a few of them, you know, little washes or whatever. We started prepping our truck today for sandblast and paint next week, a ten wheeler. So we'll be down a truck. I have talked to Topson, if we need a truck, they'll send one over. So we're not totally without if we need it.
How long will it be in?
One week.
One week.
And what, you need a couple of days to get it back?
Once it's, once we get it back, it'll take a couple hours to put it back together. It's literally 24 bolts and a couple pins. Pretty simple. So, yeah, um, equipment's all together pretty well, we've had to do some repairs, but nothing major, knock out wood. I guess that's about all you have.
I'd just like to thank you guys for all the work that you've done through the storms.
You are.
I've heard a lot of people say how much they appreciate you guys, so I hope you're hearing it too.
We hear the last of the line. Unfortunately.
One or, one or two people say thank you for all that, when we're doing the job that you do.
No, I'll keep it up. Probably have to listen to you feel, it's very good. Let us know where you need, if you need anything from us.
So, one more thing, I leave in Friday afternoon for vacation. So I've nominated Larry as road commissioner for the weekend.
Second. I respectfully. So, okay, that being said, I know we talked a little bit, so what is the plan? Have we got? You're zone away, you're gonna be away, is, is, we got anybody lined up that could step in?
So I'm sure Mr. Smith here would step in if needed. And I'm sure Sean would help.
Would help.
I'm only two and a half hours away. I mean, I'm not gonna let it.
If it's another disaster, you would be?
Yes.
Yeah.
I will come home.
Mr. Smith, are you okay with that?
I would have been.
Okay, thank you. Phillip, in your situation?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. If it goes bad, I'm, I'll be back here. Those, those guys, I probably would have to take care of it.
All right. That sounds like a plan. And I wanna thank Brent too, for stepping up, coming in, retired, working full-time right now. Appreciate it. It's not going unnoticed, so. Thank you very much.
I really appreciate it. It's helped a lot.
No, we don't, we, we got, and, and everybody needs to know, we got a lot of work ahead of us, right? We've, we've got stuff started. It's, it's, you know, winter's gonna be here pretty soon.
Right.
When September hits, we gotta start thinking a different way. So, again, it's good, so. All right? Treasure?
Okay. I handed out budgets, you have them all on your, um, table, so usually the first of the month, usually we have two meetings a month, and the first of the month I hand them out, and the second of the month, the second meeting of the month, we review it. So, um, we should be at 58%, so you can review it and ask me questions anytime, um, between now and the next meeting, and we can review it. I have a tax insert, I usually get the select board's okay to put with the tax bills, they don't know. This is what I propose to put in there, it's very similar to what we've done for previous years, and don't really, don't think many people do read it, but I think it's good, good practice to put in there our availability and the night drop, and it goes right with the tax bills.
Okay, that sounds, looks good to me.
Okay. I plan to, um, print the tax bills the week of August 26th, that week. And, um, I sent, um, an appointment letter for you guys about appointing Wayne Dyer as moderator, and I've received the letter back, he's accepted. We got the town audit, um, back, the fin, final report is complete. You can, they're, they're in the vault, so you can come in and view it at your leisure. The buyout program, I think there's five properties now that have applied. There's still two more that I'm waiting to hear from, and then there might be an, one program that, it's still part of the buyout, but they want to fix the, like, the property. And so there's a box I can check when they wanna make improvements to help with flooding, so I haven't done that, it's like a mediation type of thing. I don't know. That's for a property on Seon Road. Think that is, I think I also gave you reserves. This is all of our savings accounts that go into the, it's all listed in the town report, what their each reserve is about. And then each month I get one, I just thought with everybody being new, that you might wanna see our balances and that activity. And when you sign orders, this, I did some invoices this week, there is, um, a large invoice in there from, from Fornwall, um, for the flood, you'll have to sign it. And I think.
Make sure you're sitting down when you look at it.
Yeah. It's right in the top, so I think, I think that's it.
I've been doing the math every time I meet a truck.
Yeah.
I have two, but I miscalculated.
I'm sure I missed a few.
So I think that's it.
Okay, thank you. Carrie?
Uh, just gonna talk about the state primary, that's Tuesday. Remind everyone that it's three ballots, you're gonna receive a ballot for each party, progressive, democratic, republican. You only vote on one, you still have to return the other two. Absentees, you know, you get a separate envelope to return them, up in the gym, we'll have a separate ballot type box, they just put the two in and then the one goes through the tamulator. So this is the one to remind everybody that, or I'll just say, this is the one where everyone likes to vote two parties on one. And I just like to explain that the perfect example is Phil Scott, people like to write him in as the democratic candidate for governor. And that does nothing for Phil Scott to get voted in as the republican governor. Cause you're voting it on the democrats ticket, he's not running for the democratic representative for, for governor. So just to make that clear. He's running as the republican, his votes count towards republican. But we see a lot, see a lot of that, if you don't like your democratic governor, then leave it blank. Or write in a democratic person that's running. So, I mean, it's not a big deal, we write it in as a write-in and you get a dozen people who voted Phil Scott, but I think people think it's helping him become the governor on the republican ticket, and it's not. So that's Tuesday, 10 to 7, all day in the gym, there's been about 30 absentee ballots out, received most of them, maybe half a dozen left. So that, is that, if anyone has questions on that. And one other thing, back to the, to the tax bills, Rygate did send us new stickers for the recycling, so those will be in the tax bills as well. Where they're charging, not us, not Broughton and Rygate residents, because we pay for the program through our taxes, but it's everyone else, will pay $30 to get a ticket, to get a sticker to use the recycling, so those, there'll be new stickers in with everyone's tax bill, so people can not just put your tax bill aside and forget that there was a sticker in it. We have extra ones and a lot of times, you know, it's for all residents, so if you're, you know, there's renters who aren't tax favorites, but they still need to have them, and they, they get those for free too, the residents, is how Rygate set up the program. Also, we had a few things happen this week, odd things. Had a person basically living in his car in the parking lot. He, I went over to him Monday to ask him what was going on, you know, we'd seen him for a while, even last week out there. And it's a friendly fella, had a dog in there, don't understand that part, but in a crate. So he said, "Oh, you're, you're talking about last night?" And I just was like, hmm, I said, "Yeah." And he went on to tell me this big story of these people fighting out here by the gym and cleaning out their car and putting dogs on the porch and the ramp to the gym and, and can't even make this stuff up, I say. So then I talked to him about his plans, he wasn't very clear, he's, so he's been there, Dan can probably touch on some of this too, cause I called Dan in, so then there was a giant dog crate left under the bushes, he said it wasn't his. So Dan pulled it out of the bushes and we put it in the dumpster, well, it happens to be somebody left it there, was coming back supposedly, and so she came and cleaned it. So just some oddball stuff happening, and I think it goes back to our talk on cameras around the building, and I know we budgeted for it this year, the money is still there. And just think it's just another example, not to say that it's gonna stop any of it from happening, but just having some cameras up and some signs that say, you know, 24-hour surveillance and things like that, I think would help.
Yeah.
Would help with all that stuff going on. Uh, I did have two people wonder if the town was picking up all their junk from the flood. I told them no. I said, "There might be a program out there that's doing it, it's not the town." And I think they have piled up their stuff, thinking someone's coming to get it. And it's like sheet rock and ruined mattresses and junk down in your basement that, that got flooded, but I made it clear that the town is not doing that, so I'm hoping they find another program to take care of it. And I think that is all I have.
Good. Dorothy?
Okay, so there was a discussion last meeting with, um, Gary Langley about class, class four road and Harrow. So I got hold of the state and they sent me that information, um, Harrow, it's town highway six, Harrow Road became a class four road in 1974. So I got that information, um, I've got a copy for Harley to put in the, Harley, at least to put in the minutes, and I got a copy of it to Harold. But she went, um, it was Pam to Andrea, she went back through and sent me copies of when roads became class four or whatever, so, um, 1974 is when it became a class four, and Langley purchased the land in 1981. So it's been a class four as long as they've owned the land. Um, and I've got deeds and stuff, um, the trail when they bought it, and so I think that kinda answers that question.
Yeah.
We had, um, we had eight grievances, and we got that, those done and mailed out, resulted grievances. The final grand list was, um, printed on August 1st. So if anybody has any of the grievances now, if they have, if they wanna pursue it, they will go to VCA. And as of today, Carrie hadn't had anything yet from anybody, um, so we'll, we'll have to hold on that.
What's the deadline for that? What's the last day for that?
I think it's 14 days from whenever I mail them, I mailed them on the 30th, I think. But it says on the bottom, I'll look at the bottom of the notice.
So probably another week.
Yeah, I think it's 14 days. Gary has been trying to get hold of Nimrock to get the software loaded on our new tablet, so, um, so we can start getting pictures taken, um, and when I talked with Chris at Nimrock, I think either Thursday or Fri, it was Friday, because that was the day he called to tell me that there was a another problem with the tax, um, with the, um, budget from OESU. He hadn't gotten the email or whatever, so, and then he's off this week, so hopefully next week, Gary and Chris can connect and we can get the software loaded on to, um, the new tablet. Dan Webster's gonna be doing our pictures, and he's ready to go on that as soon as we can get, you know, as soon as we can get the tablet ready to go. So the tablet is gonna be, we're gonna be able to download, like, if he's gonna do Patterson Road, we'll download all the properties on Patterson Road from our software. He'll go out and take pictures of, he'll have each of them, report each property, take two, at least two pictures of each structure, and then when he comes back, we can load it back into the, into the main software, so it'll, it cuts out about like eight steps. So when he goes out and takes pictures, then he'll come back, load it back into the main software, and then be able to print pictures for the file, and it'll be done. So it won't be, you know, transferring pictures and a lot of other steps. So that's why we have got, we got the tablet to do that. And Nimrock is using, it's the system that Nimrock's using with their employees that are doing reappraisals in towns, so that's kinda, it's kinda the system that they're already using, so it should, um, should work well. Henry's gonna help me do some inspections, um, hopefully we'll get some done in the next week or so. I got a letter from a property owner, Andrew Batsakis. So, since 1987, there's been 11.9 acres that were, two people were paying tax on. And we had tried, Kitty before me and also Linda, had tried to get both of them information, and we talked with lawyers, and we, we talked to the lawyer, and then it would be like a year till we heard back. So it, it hasn't, it wasn't moving, they weren't making any headway as far as figuring out who the 11.9 acres belonged to. We've got three or four huge folders of where he We've got three or four huge folders of where he communicated with the different lawyers. I, so Mr. Batzakis sent a letter in July with a bill. And he's broken down the taxes that both of them has paid, and he thinks that the town owes him six thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and nineteen cents for the, the taxes that he paid on the eleven point nine acres, which actually belong to Mr. Markalis. Um, so I sent it to, uh, Byron Schlesinger, I talked to John about it, and we both said, you know, this is something the state needs to get involved with. So Byron Schlesinger, who's our district advisor, talked with a couple of her supervisors, and they, at this point, they think, they feel that we need to get it to the town lawyer, and the town lawyer needs to look at this. Um, I know at one point Linda and Kitty went through like all the old tax records and figured out who paid what on what years. And it's, it's kind, we've kind of made some progress, because in twenty twenty-three, Batzakis, who's this gentleman that sent the letter, sold the eleven point nine acres to Markalis for twelve thousand dollars. So they've kind of sorted it out, but now Batzakis is looking to be reimbursed for the double, for the taxes that he was paying on land that he didn't own, that he didn't own. But they hadn't proven that to anybody before twenty twenty-three. So it's very, very confusing. I need to go back today and look at who sold who what for the twelve thousand dollars, because it just kind of blends together. And it's, it's gone on for so long.
How many years has it gone on?
Um, since nineteen eighty-seven. So nineteen eighty-seven to twenty eighteen, they both were playing, paying on the eleven point nine acres. And their lawyers, when we talked to the lawyers, they'd say, oh yeah, it's going to court, yeah, we're working on it, it's going to court. But then we wouldn't hear anything. So it just kind of kept going, but now he wants his money back. And see, the other thing that's happened, that happens every year, is that we close, we close out the grant list and say there are no, no issues pending. So we've done that for years and years and years, because none of this was brought, you know, forth. So that's what the state is saying, is that we've closed out the books every year, not knowing that this was still an issue. So.
How do, just, how do we know, not know we're sending a tax bill for the same property to two different people?
Well, one was eleven point nine acres and the other one was, um, it said eighty, seventy acres plus eleven point nine.
Oh, okay.
So one was, so in twenty eighteen, um, I think, I think Kitty made that decision that we're, we're gonna, we were no longer, so Mr. Markalis ended up with seventy acres and the other gentleman ended up with eleven point nine. And it's very, it's very unclear. We had, cause since then, um, Mr. Markalis has sold the eleven point nine acres, and we had somebody in here doing a title search, and they were like, it's a lot of, um, it, it hasn't been like a real straightforward, cut and dry deed, it's been like, she said I could have those acres, that sort of thing, so that's kind of the way it's been written. But now I don't know what the next.
Has, has there been a survey done, so that they know the person that's got the seventy acres doesn't actually have eleven more than that?
Yes, I believe that somebody's done, someone did a survey. So I think they're, they're settled now, because he paid, Batzakis sold to Markalis the eleven point nine acres for twelve thousand dollars in twenty twenty-three. So I think they're, they've got it sorted out, it's who owns, who owns which land. But now we've gotta decide what we're gonna do about the six thousand, almost seven thousand dollar bill that he thinks we owe him money for taxes.
But if he, if he sold it and got money for it, then he's admitting it's his.
He got twelve thousand, he sold it for twelve thousand.
Then taxed on it. So like, was his property, and he was taxed on, that he's saying he shouldn't have done, but yet he sold the property.
Yes, he does.
He made money.
We already.
Non-existent property.
Yeah, but they've got money for it, this property that he supposedly doesn't own, but.
Okay, maybe, so somebody just, we need to, we need to have somebody make an official decision on this seven thousand dollar bill, six thousand eight, seven hundred dollars. Do we want the town lawyer to look at it, or?
That would be my suggestion.
Yeah, I, I think.
Okay.
That's where we get to start.
And then, and I'll, I'll get them the, what we've got for like the tax records and all the, I mean, we've done a lot of communication over the years with sending them surveys and maps and tax bills and all of that kind of stuff, so.
I mean, I, I think there is some accountability to the property owner, when you get your bill, you look at it and then you pay it, what you own. So it has to be something along those lines.
No, I think you gotta get it into.
Yeah.
A real estate lawyer or somebody's hands, yeah. He knows a lot more about it than I do, once.
It's, and it's just gone on so long, it was like, you know, we, we'd said something, then we'd think, okay, we hear it, you know, weeks or two, and it would literally be like a year before we hear anything else. And then a couple of times, we've changed, they've changed lawyers. So now it, it's starting to come over again with a new lawyer trying to figure it all out.
But we don't even have to deal with that anymore, we gotta deal with this.
We're gonna deal with this, yes.
Yeah, so, all right, yeah.
Okay, I'll get ahold of, um, the town lawyer, I think.
And is that a letter from him or from a lawyer for him?
No, this is from him, Batzakis.
I just followed.
And I haven't, I haven't responded, cause I don't know what to say, I mean, I'm not gonna say, yes, we're gonna do it, or no, we're not gonna do it. He's got the whole thing laid out from nineteen eighty-seven to twenty eighteen, what he's paid each year. And somehow we figured out what the other guy had paid each year, so I'm not, I haven't looked at these numbers, because I'm, it's a huge project.
Yeah, well, let's start with in contact and see what he advises us on.
I think that's all that I have.
How are we, uh, paying Dan to take those pictures? How are we paying Dan to take those pictures?
Um, it's gonna come out of the reappraisal money, which is every year we get money, um, eight dollars, I think, from the state per parcel, and it's put aside for our next reappraisal. So we have money in the reappraisal fund, which is, um, is there. So we're gonna do, um, John and I have talked about it a lot, John Weston, Townsley, Assessor, and I think what we're gonna do is ten dollars per parcel, plus his mileage.
Okay, I think, shouldn't that be the select board though that decides that?
Oh, we, we did, you, the select board did.
Before?
Yes, yeah, yeah, it, it went, yes, cause I, um, I, um, asked for, um, I think eight thousand dollars to come out of the reappraisal money, and they voted on that, several months ago now. Um, I can find that date if you need it. Um, but yes, the select board voted to, to spend that money out of the reappraisal funds. So that'll, um, that's where that's coming from.
Are you all set with that?
Uh, I have a question now, when it originally was proposed to the select board, it was nothing about taking pictures off the tablet and filing them. That's another, what, thousand pictures that I'm gonna be filing? There was no mention of any money paid out for that part of it. It was for taking pictures, getting them on the tablet, and getting them into the computer, download it. So I think there needs to be an adjustment. If, if I'm gonna file a thousand pieces of paper, and then who's paying for the pictures to be printed and whatever? If they're already on the tablet and they're already downloaded to the system, why do we need pictures in a file?
We've always, I think they always have, we've, I mean, the state always has pictures in our files, but I can, I can check on that, but, um. Here's some, there's a, there's a, um, a paper copy of it in the file, because then, I mean, that, so then we have like the old picture. Originally, eventually we'll just have the current pictures on the computer and not have all the old ones as well, we'll get, we'll delete those. So in some cases, we've got pictures of the old, whatever the structure looked like before, before they added the porch or the garage or whatever.
Well, my feeling is we don't wanna do extra work, we don't have to, so let's find out.
Okay.
Let's find out if it's, I mean, we got a tablet, we got storage, we got, it's at your fingertips, it's easier than going to a file.
And I think the motion, the motion was to spend up to eight thousand. I have your, this was in my folder with your old sheet.
So it didn't set the rate?
It didn't actually set the rate.
Okay.
Because I think your original one, you had done thirty-five days, eight dollars an hour, twenty bucks an hour. And then I, I do remember you talking about changing it to, um.
Ten dollars a person.
But I think the motion is on eight thousand, so then I think you can decide how, especially if stuff's getting tweaked and changing what he's doing, on how you pay them.
Yeah, it's, it's.
I mean, just as long as you spend eight thousand or less.
Correctly.
I mean, Dan, are you comfortable with ten if you don't have to do the filing?
Yeah, that's fine.
But if we gotta file, it's, there's a number that's gotta be, right? I mean.
It's a, it's a gamble.
Yeah, yeah. I guess, can we, can you find out and see if we have to?
Yeah, yeah, I think.
Yeah, I mean.
It seems to me that it's redundant to do it over and over, especially when you have it right here on the computer.
Right, right. That's good if you know how to run a computer. All right, so, anything else?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
All right, the next one is, uh, on Hen, you're hiring Henry to help you?
Yep.
Okay, and what's, what's his, it's five hours a month, so.
Um.
You're gonna use him five hours a month?
Um, yes, and I think at one point the select board thought that was probably not realistic when we were advertising it, so I think we kinda, since we haven't gotten anybody started like right at the beginning of the year, there was some discussion of eight hours a month, but I don't, at this point, I don't know.
That would fall under that admin, by filing?
Yes, yeah, that was gonna be, it was.
That was for filing?
Yes, it was five, five hours a month. And so I think that's what, um, we're planning on.
So his duties are to, to help you file?
No.
No?
At this point, he, he's gonna help with inspections. So to go out, when there's a property that's got a new garage or something, and the big properties, when it's a brand new house and John Weston House comes down and we spend a day doing all the new properties. But when it's just like a, a new shed or adding a garage or something, it's just a matter of having somebody else to go out with me since I'm all alone in the office. So it's, um, it's, it's just an extra person to help with inspections.
And, and we put this in the.
It's in the budget, yes.
But did we advertise, we did advertise this?
Yes, yeah, we advertised that.
And we didn't get any?
No, no, we advertised it.
I didn't think that was for, I thought that was for helping you file in the office, not going out.
It's, it was inspections and filing, and at that point, we were talking about having them help with fixing the maps, but we've, we got that grant, so the maps are going to Pennsylvania to be fixed.
Okay.
Repairing.
So this amount of time is gonna be able to do the filing as well, I'm assuming?
Yes, if needed, but at this point, I think the biggest need is just helping with some of the, um, the smaller inspections. Just so that I'm not going out alone.
And what is it, the rate of pay?
Um, I think, I looked the other day, I think it's eighteen dollars an hour, but I can look again and my folder there, I think that's what we budgeted.
So sixty hours, so sixty hours, gonna do what? We do eighteen an hour?
Almost every August, so.
Yeah, so.
So, yeah, whatever, we have five hours.
Yeah, so you.
It was, we put in the budget for five hours a month, so.
Good, good. Any questions? And the, the map, the grant for the maps, have you got any back from?
No, that's another, I sent, I think, I wanna say the beginning of June, and I sent them an email like the end of July and said, it's eighteen maps, when are they gonna get them back? And they said, oh, we're working on them, it'll be back sometime in August. So I'm just glad I didn't send them all. So there's gonna be, there'll be seventy maps that'll go, um, and I sent, I sent eighteen in the first batch, so when I get that batch back, I'll send another eighteen back. They were looking at having them, they said it'd be a year to get it done, and I couldn't figure out why, but now I can see why.
And what are they doing, laminating them?
No, they're just repairing. So if there, there are a lot of them that are badly torn, they're the big, um, survey maps, that have been stored for years and they're badly torn around the edges, um, so they're repairing them. Cleaning them up some, I guess, but not laminating them, and then sending them back. So I have hopes we're gonna see them soon. I put in, it was a grant through NVDA, I put in for five hundred dollars, which was, I don't know, twenty hours, or twenty hours or something, you do something. The first proposal that they got me was gonna be like sixty-three thousand. And I said, whoa, what are we doing here? And so then they, then the NVDA, Jesse from NVDA came down, went through the maps and decided there were only seventy that really needed to be repaired. And so then the grant was, we were awarded a grant for, I think, sixteen thousand. So that's what they're doing, is that they're repairing these maps.
With seventy maps for sixteen thousand?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a contract that they've signed, or?
Yes, that was what, um, it's all a bunch from NVDA, so they, they found the vendor and.
Yeah.
I just thought we could repair them. It was taped and, and, but he wanted, he wanted, he found a vendor and so we got it sent out, so.
All right.
It's a work in progress.
All right. Fire, Wayne?
Evening.
Evening.
I got the runner for a waiver.
You got a waiver, a bill, have you seen that?
No.
After the flood, or the second one, I guess. I went back to the front of the barnet, we're supposed to be the host for that particular meeting, we offered them our facilities here, that's just follow-up on that. Uh, we had batch people take the flagrant training on June eighteenth. Finally, a hose delivery of two and a half inch hoses, that's only been ten months worth, but that's been happening. Uh, so that's been identified and put on the truck. Roof bids, we only have one bid, we'll present that at the, uh, August fourteenth meeting. Uh, we had a joint.
I got a question on the roof bed. I heard that someone come today, that someone come to get some information on, are the beds closed on it now?
I've still left it open.
No, we have, I'm, I'm just.
So, did you speak with someone today?
It's all over.
Yeah, wanted to know what he, so if someone comes, they gotta go to you, right? You've got all, yeah, you've got all the info, you know what needs to be done?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, so it's still, they're still open?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so there isn't a, a select meeting on August fourteenth to open these bids, so, you know, cause that's next Wednesday.
Yeah.
So either you got to decide on having. So either you got to decide on having a special meeting just to open the bids, nothing else, either that night after five, or the next day, or something.
Correct.
So we would have to post it as, like, a special bid opening, um, meeting, 'cause it's not...
We talked about that, if that's me right, so...
So that's something to think about, what you wanna do, to open that bid.
Either Wednesday night, anyway, to do that. Yeah, I mean, let's, Wednesday night, right?
I think Bobby's not here next week, so... But two of you, but two can open it, yeah. So you wanna do it at like five o'clock, the fourteenth?
Yes. Okay.
Okay.
We did a joint program with the library, um, Smokey the Bear's birthday, eighty years. July twentieth, um, very well-attended, um, tables, Smokey the Bear was there. A lot of public and prevention information was available. And, uh, we kinda did a quick assessment of what we don't have anymore, some of these dry hydrants. The flood took out things up north end of Brock Pond, a whole water broke. The village hydrated here. The ramp to the river, access down to Puffer's Field. And, uh, we got Troy there, who's part of that dry hydrant program. He's flew himself between Maine and Vermont, so he's gonna be here on twenty-first to assess the damages, and then also got a batch of forms I gotta make out.
Yeah, so can we get help? Is it, is it?
Good chance.
Good chance?
Usually, uh, share, some of it comes from the town, some of it comes from the, uh, the grant proposal people.
Yeah.
Um, and then August fourth, we get called out to a mutual aid response over the tops and for structural fire.
Yeah.
That's pretty much it.
Yeah. Thank you. I do have a question on the ball field, Harold. Are we gonna be able to dump a couple loads there at some point before?
Sure.
Well, I mean, the, you know, if you could get a couple loads there, I bet a pro should, that they'll spread it out.
We, we do have, um, town property maintenance, and I was looking at it, and you'll see in the budget, property upkeep, we haven't spent, we budgeted eight thousand, and we've only spent like five hundred. So there is money to, I think, to repair that. I think it was for fences down at the park originally, when budget time was happening, but, you know, certainly that entrance couldn't qualify for that.
I know it's not a priority, but could just re-make it. We don't need to clean up down in there, but just make it so it's accessible at some, you know, in your spare dump. But if, 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 uh, I'll talk to you till... Uh, and I don't know, how does that work with our town property? We gotta get it fixed up, do we hire an outside contractor? We gotta, we gotta, we gotta figure out, or do, or do we hire, do they do it?
We have the equipment, so...
Yeah, no, I don't know how it works. So... Again.
We should have it takes priority.
Yeah, yeah, no, so, no, it doesn't have to be done today or tomorrow, but...
Yeah, I would definitely think that we would handle it with our own equipment.
Yeah, yeah, and, and what's it due to your, for the helicopter pads? You know, right, that uses that field?
Mm-hmm. But isn't that access through the gate on the side, so you actually go up, dump it down that access to the parking lot? Correct?
Right, and I'm, I don't know, what the whole...
Yeah, I don't think it's a, it's a huge issue, just, just driving by and seeing it all washed out, that's not good to me, so... Stuff I, stuff we don't see, we ignore, but stuff we see, we complain about, so...
I did see they had a game there, what, like a week ago.
Yeah, they, they've got, they've got tournaments coming in September, so...
Labor Day tournament, all weekend.
Yeah. All right, and there is, uh, and I don't know, the Wayne's asked, the fire department's asking for a waiver on the community building?
Yeah, so they just write a letter, that's the letter, and then select board can just waive the fee.
I mean, it's normal practice is to waive...
Beauty Club does it for chicken pie.
Yeah.
I made a motion that we waived the fee.
Yeah, good, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, done deal. All right, Mr. Dan, our live area, anybody hear the live area?
Whatever.
No, okay, Dan, you're up next, constable.
Okay. Um, going into, this is a little early, but going into the vital session for next year, the constable and annual control officer should be one person, not two. Uh, as the state laws have changed now. Um, the other thing is that, uh, effective March, I will not be able to be the constable and the health officer. It's a conflict of interest according to the state. Uh, we need some signs down at the park, if you've been here, no overnight parking. Violators will be towed, or, no one authorized overnight parking, violators will be towed or something. Um, as Terry alluded to, that gray truck's been down there every day and parked sideways. I've left a note on the windshield and stuff, but when I came overnight, the note was still on the windshield. So the guy in the gray car had been here for three or four days. I told him this morning to get off, get out of here. Um, I'm not sure still what that was about. The night before that, Kelly Little and her husband were here trying to stay overnight up by the fire station. So it's beginning to be a problem.
Yeah.
So it's something that we need to take care of.
So we gotta figure out how many signs we need.
I can think of two.
Two?
Yeah.
And I'd say try a couple up through here and then down there.
Yeah.
Pretty simple.
Yeah.
Dress up.
I can look.
Yeah.
Yeah, they have it all in those catalogs.
Okay, for zoning administrator, uh, we talked last meeting about the lister's cards. We need to have those lister's cards available. I met with Rebecca Pfeiffer, Palides, Sasha Fila, Lisa Breton, from the Vermont Emergency Management Team. I have to go out and do site damage assessments of each property that's been impacted by the flood to have them go through the buyout program. The lister's cards have information on that, it is not on the regular tax map site. So I need that information. Fortunately for me, this time around, Lisa's been helping me get the, the information off it so I can fill out the paperwork. Each one of these site damage assessments takes over an hour to do, and you have to type it out. So it's important to have that information available, and I think it'd be a pretty easy thing to do. Um, just have a renewing file that'll go into the computer upstairs in the town court's office, because I'm not always available when Dorothy's here, and she's not always available when I'm here, so...
Yeah, I know we discussed that last meeting.
All right, well...
We've gotta go forward with it, we've gotta, we've gotta have, Dorothy, I'm sure you're listening, we've gotta have it where other people can...
Right.
Access that info.
Rebecca Pfeiffer was the one that was really saying that I should have access to that, because we're getting more and more people involved in the buyout program. And fortunately, Lisa's been able to stay up with it, but she's got other things she should be doing too. Uh, the site damage assessments, uh, for the Vermont Emergency Management, um, they had allocated a hundred and sixty million dollars for buyouts, but that's gonna be gone really quick because we just keep getting these plows over and over and over. So they did extend the, uh, application process to August thirtieth. So that's all I've got on that. Uh, health officer, we've had several health advisories for equine encephalitis. It's been found in Alworth Swamp and in Second Auburn, so it's moving east. So just something to be aware of, it has transmitted by mosquitoes. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Health officer?
That was...
Yeah, maintenance, I mean.
Maintenance was, um, you know, the drainage project was supposed to start this week, you know, everything's on hold. We don't know if, what's happening. Um, we had problems with the water here in the building. It was all black, black in the toilets, black in all the sinks, and a strong sulfur smell, so I called Clearwater and talked to them, trying to see if they could come earlier than their quarterly, um, visit to check our filter system, and they came. Um, it's two hundred and sixty-five dollars, and it appears that it was due to the garden faucet that they have rigged out there, the hose that, that they used to water the plants had a hole in it, and it was spraying and dripping for weeks. And nobody could say anything, nobody replaced it, and nobody shut it off. So it was constantly running, making our ratios off in the water and causing this problem. So I sent you guys an email saying that I've talked to the one gal that comes a lot to take care of the garden, um, that for right now, stop using the water, we need to have the water corrected here, um, before that can be watered. And I think we're getting enough rain that we don't need it, but... So until we know a few more weeks, see how it, it's going. It's still hard to tell, it's still a little black, um, even today. I ran, we would, he'd put bleach in, and we would just let it sit for overnight and, and then run for twenty minutes to flush it out, so we're at that point, and so just to keep you updated on that. And then there is an, um, a proposal for the electrician, for the valise, that need to be done. It's here for you guys to, I think it's been in the select board folder, for you guys to review. And that's it.
Good. All right, T?
Should wait for the work on the table. And he's gonna get a quote for the rest of the computers, 'cause we had budgeted for X amount for, um, for this year and then, and the rest this year, like last year and this year. So I think we're at the point where it's time to order the next ones.
Okay. No one here from the Plating Commission is there?
No.
Yeah?
We have a subdivision permit that'll be booked at next Tuesday evening. Uh, and we're working on still on the work part.
Okay. Okay, ongoing drainage updates, infrastructure, Lisa touched base on it. Drainage project.
It's on hold.
It's on hold. NEK, what's that?
So that's the broadband, I haven't heard anything on that for...
Yeah, I think we can scratch some of that off, or...
I mean, I think it still has, but Dan was involved in some of that, but...
It is still happening with the floods and everything that's going on, whatever progress they made is in the rearview mirror.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Good. Community center.
That one, we haven't heard any more, so I think we scratched off.
I didn't scratch some of it, yeah.
The VORIC, that's, you know, the trail and all that stuff.
Yeah, and that's been put on.
That's on hold too.
Is that?
Yes, everything's been put on.
Yeah, I mean, is it gonna be able to happen this year now, or...
I don't know, it's material, is the problem, I think.
Yeah.
We're not sure.
Yeah, all right. All right. Okay, any other business to discuss?
Um, I just want to open, we have a big barn quilt in the back corner. I, it was sitting up here last meeting. Um, the rep did a program about the barn quilt. We had, um, I don't know, seven of us painting quilts, barn quilts, the thing, um, like over and... Doesn't matter. So, um, so anyways, Jenny, you guys, painted this large one, and it's gorgeous. And she did a wonderful job, and rep committee is asking to have it put on the community building above the entrance to the offices, if you guys still agree.
Okay.
You can think about it, whatever, it's not...
And share it to people too?
Yeah.
I just think we have the whole thing with the bell?
With the bell, that was something hanging over, it was just a sign, so I don't know. We certainly...
Well, yeah.
Certainly can check all that, for sure.
I have, I have one more thing.
Yeah.
Is there any way as a town that you could shut off the Wi-Fi here, say between nine o'clock at night and seven o'clock in the morning? I think that would eliminate some of this nonsense we're getting.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that would be a good idea.
Must be a switch, right?
Kind of, if we have to be, if I come to nine o'clock to do that, I mean, it would have to be on a timer or something, or shut off when we leave, but that would be...
I mean, what is the rules of it? I mean, is there, what's the state, is nothing?
We didn't really set the rules, yeah.
No, you set the rules, cut.
Yeah.
I can ask Terry about timer.
Yeah.
I think you're gonna be able to put in an automatic timer.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's, gotta try something, 'cause it's, we're seeing more and more of it.
Yes.
People hanging out.
Well, it, it's getting concerning though, because the rules are here during the pandemic, and we've got people still being out here all day long.
Yeah.
It's kind of, it's kind of different.
And the sheriff's been here twice this week and hasn't done anything.
Yeah.
Like, I mean, he, when he, when she's here, he...
He does good out, but he's here when she gets here.
Yeah, I mean, can, can we do anything as far as putting up signs? No lawyering on town property.
Well, I can look at signs and see if that helps.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, but, I mean, as we all know, it's not gonna get better, it's gonna get worse. All right. All right, uh, Scott, did you have something you wanted to?
I don't, I just got a little something.
Okay, perfect, sounds good. All right. Then we got the follow-up, I think we're gonna scratch, I mean, the no, no overnight camping, we were just out with signs, right? I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna do that.
We're gonna do that.
We're gonna do that.
Well, it would also be like if we wanted to ever do an ordinance, something more official than just...
Yeah.
A little more bite to...
Or get fined or something like that.
Yeah, let's, let's start with the signs, see what it, what it does. And then the gaiting, I mean, I think that's, then push.
Yeah, gotta get the trailer.
That's the way it's all...
Yeah, so... I guess, thank you everybody for your input and comment.
So there's orders to sign, and, um, the agenda for next time needs to be talked about before you call the meeting. Needs to know what we're gonna put on the agenda if anything, and how we review the next meeting agenda.
Yeah.
And Tom was thinking, was in, we're talking about the agenda and trying to shorten it up a little bit. So, um, I put a couple things together.
We don't need to have all the stuff where we keep having on there.
Right, right, it's, put it on there when it's needed, I'd say, yeah. Yeah, no, it's... How long have we gone to this one? This four?
It's been a while, you know, probably three, four years.
I'd like change, I'm good for change.
Yeah, we did it with Wayne, who's the chairman, so that, and it had to change.
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely will.
Okay.
Other than that? We put here, pardon me. Okay, I make a motion to adjourn. Second? All right. Have a good evening, folks.